I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting of Wednesday, June 3rd, 2020. In the Selectmen's meeting room on the second floor, it's now 7:00 p.m. Okay. I'll read this term. Due to the increased concerns surrounding the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting will remain closed to the public. There are no scheduled public hearings. There will be no public comments, period. Live video and audio of the meeting will be added at Comcast Local Channel 9. Recording of the meeting will also be posted on the West Bridgewater YouTube. Please join us on the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States, and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Hope everybody's feeling well out there and the town is moving along. I'm going to call my old friend there, John Delino, who's the first one on the agenda. John, how are you? Can you hear me, John?
Yes, I just turned on my microphone. I hope everybody can hear me.
I can hear you right and clear. Do you want to talk about the dam on High Street in Bridgewater? Talk a little bit about it?
All right. So what this project entails is a private owner of a dam that's located in the vicinity of High Street in Bridgewater needs to have the dam either repaired or removed because it's a hazard and it's not accomplishing what it needs to do for allowing the fish to go upstream through the fish ladder. So there's an inherent cost of repairing the dam and the liability of maintaining it over the years. And so a study's been done to decide whether to repair it or take it down. And in my experience with what happened to the Cotton Gin Dam in East Bridgewater and most other dams that I've been following in Massachusetts, the push is to remove the dam and allow the fish to go up the stream in a natural way. So what the report, very thick binder report has come up with is that it will have some impact upstream into West Bridgewater. And I just wanted to kind of highlight what those might be so that residents along the river will understand how removal of the dam will impact what they see for a river. So the best way to describe it is during the summer months, the look of the river will not change whether the dam is in there or not because the flow of the stream really governs how it looks. It's not the impoundment from the dam because the impoundment only goes upriver about three or four miles up the river. And then the rest of it's all a result of how the geometry and shape of the stream banks and the floodplain along the river is naturally situated. And that's really what controls the look of the river. So when there's low flow, it's going to be a very narrow stream, just like it looks today without the dam or with the dam. So the report that Lorna has up on the screen, if you could, Lorna, expand or zero in on the chart where I have the highlighted numbers there. About the southerly end of the golf course, the bank full conditions during spring flooding will change from 287 feet wide down to 97 feet. So there is a substantial change right at the southerly end of the golf course. But as that chart indicates, as you go from section E to F, you have 108 feet wide bank and it will go down to 44. At G, at point G, you have 267 and it'll go down to 178. By the time you get to the end of the golf course, up near Cross from Trukey's, you're down to only about a six-foot difference. So from that point on, it's going to not really look all that different during flood conditions. And so that's the distinction. During flood, you'll have those wide areas being contracted down a little bit. And then as you get up towards the South Street Bridge, there's very little change at all. So the impact on this will be visual during the spring floods and it could also have some impact on the golf course because they do draw some water from the river and do the irrigation for the golf course. So some discussion with the golf course management is necessary to make sure that their intake pipes are not left high and dry. They may have to reposition them, but I'm not that familiar with it. But some form of discussion should be made with them to make sure they can still withdraw some water from that river. So that's kind of what it is in a nutshell. It really has no bearing economically on West Bridgewater, other than it might possibly lessen some flood damage between South Street Bridge, actually our dam at the War Memorial, and what is the High Street Dam now in Bridgewater. But that doesn't seem to be a big factor and hasn't been in the past. But in a very extreme flooding situation, it might help because it'll allow more water to go through that system.
I have a question. Now, have you run through this with Division of Fish and Games? Have they been contacted or put any input on this?
Yes, they have. And they are currently working with West Bridgewater to redesign the fish ladder at the War Memorial Park Dam. So once the High Street Dam is removed and the fish ladder that's not working well there, Division of Fisheries really wants to see that dam out of there so that the herring can come upstream to our fish ladder. And they want to have our fish ladder repaired so that it works properly so the fish can get up over our dam and up to the Nipptucket, Lake Nipptucket.
They're all right with it, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Now, we started this conversation, you said it was private now. Now, how are we getting involved in something that's private?
So we're not really partners in this, other than that we're supplying them information and feedback, but it is no cost to the town?
Yeah, that's my other question, about if there's going to be any classes at the town.
Yeah, Chairman Marari, the only reason I placed on the agenda is because as a budding town, we even speak about a six-inch binder. We even speak about a six-inch binder on it.
Yeah.
We received a lot of feedback. Yeah, we received about a six-inch binder on it. I didn't have time to be able to go through it in detail. I spoke to John. I know John was very much involved with it from afar. Bridgewater has full jurisdiction on it. It's a private dam. It's just that obviously there's going to be some impact to the town of West Bridgewater if the dam is no longer there. And I just thought it was important for the Board of Selectmen to be aware of it. In reference to the golf course, I've already been in contact with the management. Management's superintendent has already met with the engineer and they're working through it because the engineer has already made it clear that they don't want to do anything that's going to adversely impact the ability of the golf course to draw down water. So they're already in contact and meeting with each other.
Okay. Does the Board of Selectmen have any comments on this or do you want to ask any questions there?
I do not. Thank you, John.
So, John, just a quick question and just want clarification. As the bandwidth narrows, and that's what's going to happen with this, I think you said, wouldn't that create more flooding?
Did you get your question, John?
I think we lost John.
I don't think you liked that question.
Would you repeat the question to me?
So, John, if you could enlarge, Lorna, if you could enlarge that screenshot again. If I was understanding and following correctly, John, the, what is it called? The bank full is narrowing as this progresses? Wouldn't that create more of a flooding issue? Or am I misunderstanding?
So what bank full means is where it naturally extends to as the water flows down under spring flood conditions. So the bank is not necessarily going to be changed in terms of its position. What's going to happen is the amount of water flowing through the channel will come towards the center of the stream and be narrower amount of water going through. So when the floods come in the spring, it'll still over top and go to the, over the banks just like it does right now. But with the dam gone, there will be less width to it and so it won't create any flooding. It'll be actually less flooding. And so it's not, they're not changing the shape of the stream, they're just changing the amount of water, the surface of the water flowing through the floodplain.
Okay. So, and there are no residents that would be affected by this? If they are affected, it would be a positive?
Well, some of the, even our Reynolds Landing boat launch area will be affected by the fact that you'll have to go a little bit farther out onto the floodplain to launch your kayak or canoe to get into the water. Same at Trukey's Landing. During the spring, you can go to the bottom of the bank and jump into your kayak or canoe and take off. Now, without the dam there and during spring floods, you'll have to go a little bit farther towards the center of the stream before you can get into the water. So yes, there will be some impact that way, but it's not, it's not a bad thing. It just means a little bit more distance that they have to travel.
Okay, John, are you looking for a vote here? Are you going to further study this or how, where does the verdict go?
So this is more just information so that everybody's aware of what this means to the town. And what I'm trying to convey is that it's really not going to impact the town that much to be concerned with. You'll have better flow of herring up the stream to our dam and our fish ladder. You'll have less flooding in the floodplain because the dam won't hold back water and it'll allow more water to flow through the High Street Dam area where it used to be. And so in a, I guess nutshell, it is a better situation for everything.
Well, I was just kind of wondering, maybe we should open it up to the residents of town there for their comments before we make a final vote here. Because I know the Rod and Gun Club over there, they use the river, they kayak over there. And you know, it wouldn't hurt to get their input if we make a, how essential and when do you need this? Do you need it right away or?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump in, there's no vote of the Board of Selectmen required because the town of West Bridgewater has no jurisdiction on the matter.
Okay.
It's entirely in Bridgewater. It's a privately held dam. John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the original decision was that the private owner had a choice to either repair it or remove it, and it was much less costly to remove it. And the owner then has to follow all MAST, EP, MAST, Marine Fisheries rules and regulations. I'm sure if there's a public hearing, the public hearing will be held in Bridgewater and they will do whatever they have to do. But the town of West Bridgewater has no legal jurisdiction, there's no vote. John, am I right in that?
That is correct. Yep.
Well, what I can say here, you know, that's like a safety thing there. We had that and we could regulate it. Now we won't have no regulation on that. That water will just come right straight through and we could get some extreme flooding too.
No, I believe that by not having the dam there with the impoundment upstream from that dam in Bridgewater, it'll allow more water to go through. So I believe I will have less flooding in West Bridgewater.
Okay. Correct. Well, Alden, just the opposite, the dam stops the water.
Right.
And it downstreams. So once you remove an impediment of flow, then the water is going to flow and it'll be just the opposite.
Yeah, okay, I understand. Okay, any other questions for John? And if there's none, thank you, John, for coming in and you've always been helpful on these cases.
You're right. Well, you're quite welcome and thank you and enjoy your evening.
Yep. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Yes, you're welcome. Bye.
Bye.
All right. Moving along on our agenda, boards of selectmen business approve the minutes of May 6th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay. Ballows in favor? Is this going to, David Rokal voting all these?
Yes, please.
All right, Marari, yes?
Raise, yes.
Kenahan, yes.
Okay, so voted. B, except for review of minutes for May 20th, 2020.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
All right, on the favor?
Raise, yes.
Kenahan, yes.
And Marari, yes. So that's a vote. All right, review of the proposed scheduled meetings, important dates for the second of the calendar year 2020. These are all subject to changes if there's, you know, but this is a tentative guide to go by. But we can change that schedule as we have in the past as we go along. So what will be approved and what we have in front of you and subject to change? Any comments or is there a motion to approve these minutes or any changes you want to make or whatever?
I'll make a motion to approve the tentative schedule.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Rokal, Marari, yes?
Raise, yes.
Kenahan, yes.
Okay, so voted. Vote to open the annual town meeting warrant.
So, members of the board, we normally, we've already opened and closed the warrant. However, obviously with the coronavirus pandemic, there's been some nuances in the schedule and there's been some nuances throughout the town. And as a result, we have to make some last minute changes. So, or I'm going to ask you to, obviously it's up to the board to make those changes if you see fit. So what I'm going to ask you to do is to open the annual town meeting warrant. I'll walk you through a couple of changes I'm going to request and then we will close the warrant. And then once we do that, then you will vote on your recommendations and your motions and assign leaders as we normally would.
Okay. I'd like to first vote, vote to open the annual town meeting warrant. Is there a motion?
Second. I'm sorry, so moved.
Second.
Marari, yes?
Raise, yes.
Kenahan, yes.
Okay, so voted. Okay, so walk us through.
Yep, so the first one on the agenda is when you first approved the warrant a couple of weeks ago, there was an original water article in which they were going to use funds to continue looking to permit a new water source. The Water Department would like to rescind it. Quite frankly, I would recommend that we take it off the warrant because if the Water Department doesn't want to fund it, then a town meeting, they're not going to move it, it's going to just die on the floor and it's just a waste of time and potentially confuses people. So since they don't want it on the agenda and we had to open it for a different reason anyway, I think this is just good housekeeping. So I would ask you to take a vote to remove it off the warrant.
Is there a motion to add effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Marari, yes?
Kenahan, yes.
Raise, yes.
Okay, so voted. Okay.
The next one is an article from the school. This is the primary purpose that I was looking to open the warrant. This was an article they were going to originally place on the special town meeting. However, at that time, they were looking to transfer those funds to their operating budget. They no longer need to transfer funds to their operating budget because obviously the school has been closed. However, this is money, about $49,000, that was sitting in account for when we paid the Spring Street School a couple of years ago. The money should be moved. Now, we could choose to not move it into the specialist stabilization account. We would normally close it out at town meeting. It would fall to free cash and in the following year, you could spend it anywhere you see fit. But truthfully, we set up a sped stabilization account in the past. We need to fund it at one time. We would only be funding it through free cash source anyway. So instead of allowing this to fall to free cash and doing two steps, I think we do one step. We place the money into it and the process going forward is if the school in the future needs to access the money that's in this sped stabilization account, they can only do so after the Board of Selectmen votes to release the amount. So they have to petition the board. So there is still a check and balance on the usage of the money. So at this point, I think that it's the wise thing to do. So I would be asking you to place this warrant article onto the warrant.
I'll make a motion to put this article on the warrant.
Second.
Okay, Marari, yes?
Kenahan, yes.
Raise, yes.
Okay, so voted. Okay.
And the third one is now not going to have to require any action. When we last met, you'll recall, I received the articles late in the process. I was unaware as to what the changes were or not. And there was some questions about the SOLO bylaw. The bylaw study committee met yesterday. And the bylaw that was proposed or written at the last meeting remained intact, so there's no changes. So as a result, we don't have to make any action on this. But because we're required by the open meeting law to post this $48 in advance, I had a post in case a change was made yesterday, which it wasn't. So at this point, I would just, we don't have to take any action. We could just move past it and we can go straight to closing the annual town meeting warrant unless you have any questions.
Okay. Is there a motion to that effect or?
I have a question.
Yep.
One of the concerns with this bylaw was whether or not the resident who was proposing it had an opportunity to have some discussion with them?
Yep.
And to see if the bylaw is written, was carried through with the spirit he intended. Did that occur?
It did. I spoke to the resident myself today and he is comfortable with the language as proposed.
Okay.
So he's all right with it? Okay. That was a question I was going to ask. Any other questions?
No.
Is there a motion?
You do not.
I'll make a motion to close the warrant.
You don't need a motion. Vote to close the annual town meeting warrant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Marari, yes?
Raise, yes.
Kenahan, yes.
Kenahan, yes, or whatever?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, moving along, approve motions to make recommendations on the assigned readers for the annual town meeting, currently scheduled for June 29th, 2020.
Yeah, so before you, you have the article and you have the motion. This will address Selectmen Kenahan's concern from the previous meeting when he was saying that the articles at that time did not have numerical values associated with it. Now that we have the motions, they will. So I will ask you to approve the motions. I will ask you then to vote on which ones you are in favor of or you're not. And then we would also assign leaders. So in the past, we just looked at Article 1 and if there was no objections, we just moved Article 2. You don't have to take a vote on every single one, except at each article, you just want to state as to who you think should make them move it. Most of them are pretty easy because it'll say DPW or school within it, but you'll just say that as we go through the article. So Article 1 and Article 2 are consent motions. And that is usually, the moderator just reads it and as consent articles and nobody else actually has to move it. So if you have no objection, we would then move on to Article 3.
Okay. You have to take a vote on this or?
We will on the end.
At the end.
At the end, okay, I understand. Okay. The consent article.
So Article 1 and Article 2 is a consent article of which the moderator will read. We're on Article 3. In years past, Article 3 was normally moved by the board. So if it's going to be moved by the board, which one of the board members would like to move number 3?
I would. I'll move 3.
Okay. So then Article 4 is the budget, which you've already voted and approved. And so as in the finance committee, the finance committee would move that one. And I just want to make sure, oh, yes, and the finance committee would move that one. Again, no objections, I assume.
No objections.
Article 5 is for exemptions and the Board of Assessors would normally move this one.
Okay.
Article 6 is for Chapter 90 funds and usually it would be the DPW director who would move this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Article 7 is CPC. So it's CPC that would normally move Article 7. Okay. Article 8 is also a CPC article. And this here is a brand new one. We've never seen this one before. CPC would move this one as well. Article 9 is CPC in order to pay debt on Friendship Park and that would be moved by And Article 10, CPC article as well for the conservation agent to expend resources to preserve Skimville Bridge. Again, that would normally be moved by CPC. Article 11 is to fund OPEB or other post-employment benefits that is normally moved by the treasurer. Article 12 is the funding of our regional grant for the regional police department or regional police task force that is normally moved by the police chief. Article 13 is a capital budget request. It is for lifts. It is from the Department of Public Works, so it should be moved by DPW. Article 14 is a capital budget request that is for sidewalks and that would be moved by DPW. Article 15 is to fund the traffic intersection light to match the state grant at Howard Street and West Center Street. That would be moved by DPW. Article 16 is a new fund, this is called the Uber account in reference to Uber, a small Uber tax now is going to be re-appropriate to all the municipalities. It's $2,300. We recommended to you, the board, last time that we transfer that money into the construction of sidewalks and as a result, DPW would move that. Article 17 is a capital budget request for a pickup truck for the fire department. So the fire chief should move that one. Article 18 is for the purchase of Russo property and it's being sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. So it would normally be the board that would move that one. Alden, you put the first one. We normally go in rotation. So that means that if you have no objections, Denise, then you would be the one to move that one.
I'll move that one.
Okay.
Article 19 is to transfer money from free cash for the design engineering for the athletic complex. And that way, again, the Board of Selectmen should move that one. So Anthony, if you have no objection, that would be you.
Yep.
Article 20 is the one that you just placed on to the warrant. This is from the school to transfer money from the old page. from the old paving account into the sped stabilization account. So it should be the school department if you have no objection. Article Twenty-One is a capital budget request to purchase a new pickup truck for the water department. Therefore, it should be Water who moves that one. Article Twenty-Two is a, uh, capital budget request to purchase a new starter motor of fifteen thousand dollars. That should be moved by the water department. Article Twenty-Three is a capital budget expense from the water department to pay down debt on existing, uh, loan. Uh, that should be moved by the water department. Article Twenty-Four is to pay down debt on a well loan from the, uh, water department. So therefore, it should be moved by Water as well. Article Twenty-Five is a grant that they've applied for and they're able to utilize. Truthfully, I have not had a conversation in depth with Wayne. He sent me an email on it. I don't really fully understand it, but his argument is, is that it's an opportunity for the town to take advantage of some grant through DEP. The town has to expend seventy-seven thousand dollars to access the grant. So I'm assuming that they have to pay so much and the town gets the, um, gets so much from DPH. But being a Water article, I would recommend that the Water Department move it. Article Twenty-Six is a capital budget expense to replace radios. So that would be moved by the water department. Article Twenty-Seven is an easement on Howard Street. Uh, we put in a sidewalk this past year. And there was a very small sliver of a couple of square feet that actually is owned by the property owner Hoffman on the corner. They provided us a right of entry earlier in the year and have already signed the easement, allowing us to be able to access the property and build on it. But only town meeting could actually fully accept the easement. So this would be being, uh, provide, this is going to town meeting for that acceptance. I would think because it's town-owned property, the Board of Selectmen should move that. So because we're in rotation, I would recommend if it's okay with you, Eldon, you would be the one to move it.
Okay, so let's, uh, explain that a little bit more now, uh. Okay, there's no cost to this, uh? It's been given?
That is correct. There is no cost.
Okay, all right, hold it, all right.
Um, Article Twenty-Eight was a change in the finance committee bylaw that the finance committee originally recommended. So as a result, I would recommend finance committee would move it.
Uh, are we discussing this or just going through them all and then discussing it? They did have a question on FinCon.
Um, I think it's whatever you prefer.
You can discuss it, I think, if you want to be, we got something as we go through it.
Um, I just wanted to take a quick look at the changes. It got a little confusing last time because we were looking at an original and a red one.
You kind of jumbled up, I don't know the word you're saying.
So it was, can you hear me now?
That was a little better.
Yeah, a little bit better.
I think, um, if Nate, are you muted?
Am I what?
You are? Okay, I'm just checking to see if Nate was muted. Sometimes that will cause the feedback. Is it any better?
Yes, it's better.
Okay. So I just wanted to take a quick look at it because it.
What article are we on now?
Twenty-eight.
Okay, that's right, yeah, okay.
So it became a little confusing at the last meeting because we were looking at various versions of it. Um, I think this is the final version where we pretty much agreed to very few changes.
Yep, so you're, you're entirely correct. The reason we had multiple changes is because the finance committee made an original proposal. The bylaw study committee then had modifications to that proposal. And so I want to make sure through full transparency that you were able to see the different iterations of it. The conversation at that time was the fact that the board was felt that since the finance committee, it was unaware of any modifications from the bylaw study committee, that the Selectmen originally, you weren't even gonna place it on the warrant. The feeling was, why would you recommend placing on the warrant if you were unsure if the finance committee was actually in favor of the changes made at the bylaw study committee? Because they were unaware at that point. So what you did was you made changes to this that mirrored just about identical to what the original changes from the finance committee were. So in Section One, everybody agreed to go from nine to seven and remove the Board of Selectmen as part of the finance committee. In Section Two, we all agreed to make sure that the finance committee members were a resident of the town. However, the finance committee originally voted to remove the subcommittee as the appointment authority. The bylaw study committee did not make that recommendation. We all know that there's some history with that. And so therefore, the Board of Selectmen, my understanding, I hope I captured it right, the Board of Selectmen decided to leave that untouched and keep the subcommittee as part of the bylaw. Section Three, we just changed it to make sure that it was clear as to what the staggered terms were. But it says the same as it originally did. In Section Four, we had to remove the fact that there was a, um, an appointive member of the finance committee and the executive board because the way the original bylaw wrote was that the Board of Selectmen were part of the finance committee, but you were not part of the executive board of the finance committee. There is no need to have that distinction anymore because the Board of Selectmen is now been entirely removed from the finance committee. So we just deleted that. That was consistent with the, the original thought of the finance committee in the bylaw study committee as well.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. So, uh, I guess we're moving, what, to, uh, twenty-nine?
So Article Twenty-Nine is a zoning bylaw, and I believe the rest of them will all be zoning bylaws. They should be moved by the planning board. This is for driveways. I did not have a chance to vet this prior to your last meeting. I had a lengthy conversation with the chairman of the planning board. And now I fully understand it. This would pertain to only new developments. And it would refer to developments. So as an individual, like for example, if you own your house, you want to move your driveway from one side of the lot to another side of the lot, this bylaw does not apply. This is only for new development.
Okay.
David, what if some of these, though, just physically aren't possible? Like if you're at the end of the cul-de-sac, you can't have a hundred feet of sightline in either direction because the left to you is, might be woods.
So, um, I'm gonna take a stab at it. Most of the time, whenever we have a zoning bylaw and somebody cannot comply, you then ask for a variance with the zoning board of appeals. So for example, we have setback requirements in our zoning bylaws for garages. I think it's twenty-five feet that they have to be set back from the border. If you only have eighteen feet, in essence, you would be precluded from being able to build your garage. But recognizing that that might be unfair, you ask for a variance from the zoning board of appeals to give you relief in that instance of seven feet. I believe the same would be the case here. So if, for example, it says that you have to have one hundred feet of sightline and you only have sixty-five feet of sightline, I would believe you would then file with the zoning board of appeals for a variance, seek relief. If the zoning board of appeals provides the variance, you would then go through the process with the planning board. And again, this is new development, so this would be contractor. This would be somebody developing a, usually a subdivision. Although, obviously, one person could buy a lot and just build a new home. And that person would do the work instead of the general contractor.
Any questions?
Is this the same bylaw that we had a discussion on that also said that once a street is laid, a new street is laid, you can't reopen it for five or seven years or something like that?
That is not, that was, that was a road opening moratorium that you did not vote for to place on the warrant.
Okay.
All right, any other questions on twenty-nine?
And just because I want to make sure I'm full-train. Last time we spoke, this is also the bylaw that requires a five thousand dollars cash surry on each driveway if it is not, uh, completed prior to the CO being released. That was a conversation I recall us having.
Okay.
So that would be the zoning board of appeal, I'm, I'm so sorry, that would be the planning board. Article Thirty is the SOLA bylaw that we were referring to earlier that I spoke to that resident. This does comply with the spirit of what that, uh, resident was looking for. And again, being a zoning bylaw, I would recommend that the planning board move it.
Uh, it's planning board, okay.
Article Thirty-One and Thirty-Two pertain to the same item. Um, so when we go to town meeting, the chairman of the planning board, assuming you agree with me that they should move it, but the zoning bylaws, so they should, um, has to do with signs in town. When you received it last time, quite frankly, it was poorly written. And again, I didn't have a chance to, to vet it. So we have two sections in our bylaw. Section four point four that has our table of use, which defines where the use of signs are. And then we actually have a sign bylaw, which is six point five. But in one article, you can't amend two different bylaws. It would be too confusing because you wouldn't know what you're voting on. So I had to split it into two different articles. So we are going to attempt to discuss them at the same time because one is no good with the other. It's just the way our bylaws are written. So Article Thirty-One incorporates a special permit required for a digital message board. That's all it does. It defines what it is, and it says that you need to receive a special permit. Because right now, digital boards, um, is a, to what the, what they are allowed for in town. Article Thirty-Two then talks about where they're allowed, what the size is, and how they would be, how they would be permitted for size, spacing, that type of stuff. So Article Thirty-One and Thirty-Two both pertain to signs, both for digital sign, the digital signs. They will be moved at the same time. And I would recommend, again, being a zoning bylaw, they move by the planning board.
Okay.
Okay, so we've assigned the leaders. Is there any discussion on any of the articles?
I'll make a motion to recommend all articles.
Is there a second?
A second, I think we've pretty much discussed them all fairly normally last, last time we met.
All right, Marari, yes?
Kenahan, yes.
Um, in, I'm, look, I'll, the vote is good. I just, um, Selectman raised, you had mentioned to me to make sure I put in the packet in reference to the Russo property about the rollback taxes. So because we just had it, um, and full disclosure, it's in the packet, but you haven't, you haven't seen it yet. So I just want to remind you if, if there was something that you want to say in reference to that.
No, I, I think just to clarify the fact that the, the acquisition price is six hundred, correct me if I'm right, I pointed, David, the acquisition price is six hundred thousand dollars. But there's also approximately sixty thousand dollars in rollback taxes that are, uh, we will not be collecting. So if you include that, it is about six sixty, our final cost for the property.
And that information is accurate. If you break it down, um, at six hundred thousand dollars, we're paying thirty-eight thousand dollars an acre if you include the sixty-six sixty, make it sixty, six hundred and sixty thousand, it's forty-three thousand dollars an acre. Uh, but you're entirely correct. Uh, whenever the town purchases sixty-one A property, the rollback taxes automatically get waived. That's in, that's per statute.
I, I have a question here now, uh, the, uh, town election is twenty-seventh and, and the twenty-ninth is the town meeting that comes right up now. Uh, and usually we change the, the chair at the, uh, after the election, okay? So who would be the, uh, the chairman for the town meeting? Would it be the president chairman that's on, or how's this gonna work?
So, um, what I'm going to do is I always post an agenda for the Board of Selectmen for the night of annual town meeting.
Yeah.
You were posted for a half hour before the meeting. So that way, if there's any last minute business you have to do, you can legally do so. Uh, I'm going to place on that agenda to take a vote to reorganize the board. And the reason being is, is that Eldon, presumably you win the election, then, uh, Denise has already, in fairness to her, she's lost a couple of months as being chair. And so I'm gonna place it on there, and then you guys, if you would like to take a vote and reorganize.
Okay.
If, if Eldon, don't get mad at me, but I'm just saying this because it's a possibility is that if you do not win, then that's why also I need to post it. And remember, I have to post it prior to the election, so we're not gonna know the results.
Right.
So if you do not win, then we definitely would want to reorganize because, uh, you as chair would no longer be on the board at that point. So I'm going to post it on the agenda to give you the board the flexibility to make a decision. Just because I posted on there doesn't mean you have to take that vote that night. You may choose not to, but it will be posted to give you the flexibility.
Okay. All right, Greg, Denise?
I, I couldn't understand some of what was being said, but yes, I do want to sit in the big chair.
Okay.
So I believe that there was a, a motion and it was, um, there was a motion on the floor. It was seconded, and you were in the process of taking a roll call vote on the warrant articles, on the motions, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, Marari, yes?
Raise, yes.
Kenahan, yes.
Okay, well, that's, uh, that brings through that, okay? So, thank you. We went through that pretty rapidly. Let's see, uh, uh, sign F, the town meeting warrant, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Marari, yes?
Kenahan, yes.
Raise, yes.
Okay, so voted. What were the vacation carryover requests? Uh, Chris, I know Telly, you have it on your agenda sheet, uh, there.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Marari, yes?
Kenahan, yes.
Raise, yes.
All right, uh, so voted, uh, uh, sign the purchase and sales agreement, uh, for the Russo property.
So the purchase and sale agreement is in front of you. Uh, town council, we've obviously negotiated the price of six hundred thousand dollars as alluded to earlier. There is no deposit required. It is contingent on a town meeting approval. Uh, and so, um, you know, town council has reviewed it. At this point, I would be asking you for your approval to, so you could sign it. I would, and the seller has already signed it, if I, if I believe so. The one we put on, they may not have their signature, I'm not sure. But I'm pretty sure they've already signed the hard copy. And, um, in that way, we would like to be able to post it so that way people can see it leading up to town meeting.
Okay.
Motion to approve and sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Marari, yes?
Raise.
Kenahan, yes.
And, all right, uh, so voted. Authorize, uh, disposal of the crack, uh, seal machine. I'd like to ask a question about this now. Do we have another crack seal machine, or why is this being disposed of?
Yep, so, um, we, the, the short answer is we do not have one. The one that we have now, we bought in twenty-eleven, it was used. Apparently, they have, the DPW department has consistent problems with it. And they have invested thousands of dollars into it over the years. And they have now gotten to the point that it is less expensive for them to hire or subcontract out someone and have that person do the work. So I have spoken to both the assistant director and the director. They are both in agreement that we should sell the machine and just continue, and just continue to sub out the work. Apparently, they believe the value to be around twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, and because it is over ten thousand dollars, the procurement policy of the Board of, to have the Board of Selectmen vote to declare it a surplus piece of machinery. And then as chief procurement officer, I would then be authorized to sell it off. And the DPW director is with us. Uh, he just joined us in case you did have any direct questions. Or if, Chris, if I got something wrong, please feel free to jump in.
Chris, you have anything, any comments on?
Chris, you're on mute.
Chris, you there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I am now.
Okay, have you any question on this, or why we're, uh? Okay, have you any questions on this, or why we're selling this machine? David explained, we're not, no longer using, we had a lot of problems, we spent a lot of money on it. And now we're contracting out for that service.
That's correct.
So anything else you want to add to it?
No, I think that pretty well sums it up. We don't use this type of equipment too often, and it's much more cost effective to have it subbed out.
Okay. So, Boyd, you have any questions?
Nope, I'll make a motion to approve the disposal.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Marari, yes?
Raise, yes.
Thank you.
So voted, okay, Chris, you're all set. Okay, now we're gonna approve the town meeting, election nineteen contingency.
So the town clerk worked on this, I've reviewed it as well, and I'm in agreement with what she is proposing. Basically, this is the plan as to what we're gonna do to make sure that our election workers stay safe, and that the people coming in to vote stay safe as well. There is nothing guaranteed, we obviously can't, nothing's a hundred percent. But we're gonna make every effort between Plexiglas, hand sanitizer, marking of lines, indicating where people go, having staff members there to help people, and then making sure that as normal, there is one line in and a different line out. And again, the town clerk is with us this evening, if you have any direct questions for her. And then I would ask you to take a vote to approve the policy.
No, not about that, but I've been asked there, how do the people obtain an absentee ballot? What's the procedure they gotta go through?
Well, if they want to get an absentee ballot or an early voting ballot, there's two different options. And they need to fill out an application, so they need to contact the town clerk's office, or they need to go to the town website and print off an application. The application then has to go to my office, and when we receive it, we would mail them out a ballot.
Okay, all right, I was asked that question, thank you. Any other questions on this? Do we have a motion to approve this?
Make motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion on this? If there's none, I'll call for the roll call vote, Marari, yes?
Raise, yes.
Can I hand you?
Okay, so voted, and so?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for coming in.
No problem.
All right. Communication and reports from our boards, commission and town officials. Is there anything the board, or the board of selectmen would like to say at this time, or open for discussion?
So, yeah, go ahead. So I've had some communication with residents over the past few months about pole lights being out. And I think some time ago, we had this discussion. We thought perhaps they were being metered, we found out that, no, they weren't being metered, we pay a flat fee per pole. So we are paying for lights that aren't working. And then COVID-19 happened, and this sort of went into the background, but it's been resurfaced again. So we're looking for, okay, what is the mechanism for getting to National Grid? And the first thing is, they need the pole number, and that's something that you can identify right on the pole. Secondly, we have a phone number that anyone can call National Grid and report that light is out. They should, within a reasonable amount of time, come down and replace the light. So the number is eight hundred three two two three two two three. That's the number, how you should contact National Grid with the pole number to report that the light is out. If for some reason, a resident doesn't feel safe going onto a busy street, or for whatever reason, getting the pole number to report, and they can call the selectman's office and report that information, and we'll get it to National Grid.
Please repeat that number, eight hundred what?
It's eight hundred three two two three two two three.
Three two two three, okay.
Eight hundred three two three two two three. Now, and I think what we want to also let residents know, you know, if they do report it to National Grid, and in a reasonable amount of time, they don't see that pole is lit, they should let our office know. I mean, I would think it's reasonable to give ten business days to get the job done. But after that, you know, let us know that they did report it. I'd be glad to pursue it from there.
The way, why they run that lighting thing there now, that car Michael there, what's the story on the LED lights there? I tried to get a hold of them, he hasn't got back to me. What is the latest on that? Of us, you know, getting those new lights out there, and they're a better light, and they run cheaper.
Yep, so I actually had a conversation, an email conversation with National Grid yesterday about it. And so they're gonna get me the information, they were supposed to get it to me back in late February, they never did. Again, everybody's life got turned upside down for a couple of months, and I obviously got busy, I didn't chase them, and they didn't provide it. So, but I've reached out to them, things are now starting to get a little bit more back to normal, they're not normal yet, but back closer. So they said that they'll send the information out to me, we'll bring it to the board, and that way you can begin to review. We'll have options, and we have to figure out which option is going to be better for the conversion.
Okay, and I noticed we got a notice this week as far as River Street, and it's in the final leg. Maybe we can say something about that, Dave. So we gotta get the final sun, and then we can post that road, no correction.
Yep, you're entirely correct. We did, we received notice from the District of Mass DOT that they have approved the heavy commercial vehicle moving from River Street. It now goes to Boston for their final review and approval. Again, it's taken the district about three months, so I'm guessing three months in Boston, but again, it's a guess. We have contacted, there was two people on River Street that had initiated the process. And in writing, we have sent a memo to both of them, giving them the good news that at the local level, it's approved, we're waiting in Boston. And as soon as we receive approval from Boston, we will post the signs accordingly.
I'm on that committee, and I give that a push, and I noticed that right after that, whoever took my message there, and then they approved it up until now, so we're waiting for the final approval. Thank you, Dave, I know you did a lot of work on this too, in my office, and this is the full commitment that goes on here. Is there anything else we wanna bring up at this time?
The only thing I didn't say, Eldon, which I should have, is if a resident calls the selectman's office to report a light out, the best possible address you could leave would be helpful. Don't be like me and say, take a right and then a left at the Big Red Maple. That street address would be, you know, as close as possible would be helpful.
Okay, you come broken up there, so I don't really know what you said. Repeat that again.
You might not want to hurt it anyways.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know what it is, it's, I think it's because I was sitting in this office, is it still breaking up?
Yeah, it's broken up.
You were a little better there, when you lean forward, it sounds better.
Okay, so all I said is that if a resident calls the selectman's office to report a light out, to provide the best possible address, you know, the street, possibly which house number it's near, versus, you know, take a left at twenty-eight and then a right at the Red Maple, try to keep it as descriptive as possible. I'm not very good with addresses, and that's not helpful, but if they could be better than me, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else? Okay. I know they're gonna, the public number comment, we never got any, we got any calls from outside there? No calls, okay, so I guess we move on to, if the board don't have anything else to, I'll move on to the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will tell you this, we're all tired of talking about coronavirus. However, I give you an update every time because it has been a lot of work on myself, my staff, and certainly created a lot of anxiety throughout the town, both from an employee standpoint and from a resident standpoint. So to update the board, we do at least have some, finally, some positive news to discuss. First of all, the trend is coming down across the state. The trend is coming down in West Bridgewater for cases. We have now, on Monday, we are scheduled to enter into phase two for reopening Massachusetts. A big part of phase two is going to allow restaurants to be able to begin to have outdoor dining. I've already met with members of the staff, both Linda and Lauren have been working the last couple of days, along with the health agent, the building inspector, the police chief, and the fire chief. And we're going to develop a streamlined process, so that way we can get these restaurants that so choose to have outdoor dining up and running as quickly as possible. They've made a change in the executive order that usually when there's alcohol involved, it has to also be approved by the state after the board of selectmen, it's a local licensing authority approves it, and that is no longer necessary, it's just going to be a notification. I would like, because these restaurants have suffered enough, is that I would really like to try to ask the board in a moment about getting a blank balancing, so we can streamline the process. But the bottom line is, we have good news. Restaurants are going to start the process of being able to reopen. The library started doing curbside pickup last week, we sent a memo out in reference to that. Today, Plexiglas was installed in all offices in the town hall to be able to provide a level of safety as a barrier between people in the offices and the general public when we do reopen the building. And we've also secured additional hand sanitizer and other cleaning materials through the board of health. And so we put together a policy on that, so people, employees would be able to access it. So we have some good news, we're trending in the right direction. I'm on a call every single Tuesday with Lieutenant Governor Polito, they've done a ton of work on this. And although it's slow, and we're all obviously disappointed that we're not entirely open at this point, we're starting to see some movements in the right direction. So with that said, if you have any questions about it, I'll answer it, if not, I'll move on to a request on a common VIC policy for outdoor seating.
You have any questions?
David, when is the next, when's the next phase of this plan to be discussed? Is it three weeks or two weeks?
Yep, so we're currently in phase one. Phase two is to start on Monday. So right now, that, as Lieutenant Governor Polito has announced, is that phase two will be the releasing of new guidelines to allow new businesses to start to open. And part of that is going to be outdoor restaurants and a whole slew of other businesses that will be able to start to open as well.
Right.
We don't know those guidelines yet, so, but not all of them.
So what I was looking for is, when is the next phase start? Is this a two or three week phase?
Yep, so they originally said that it was going to be three weeks in between. So phase three, off the top of my head, I think is June twenty-ninth.
So it's gonna go in three steps then, right?
Technically four, but that is correct.
But a lot of restaurants probably aren't going to be able to take advantage of this because it's not profitable. To open up at twenty-five or fifty percent isn't going to meet their margin.
There's no doubt that that's gonna be a challenge for these restaurants. That's why I'm gonna ask in a moment to streamline the process on outdoor seating, because I think we're all really sensitive to their needs. So if they can have some outdoor seating, which they are not going to be limited, there's gonna be no capacity restraints on outdoor seating. As they release guidance, as the governor releases guidance for indoor seating, which they claim is gonna be at least two to three weeks down the road, you are entirely correct, selectmen raise, is that the original impression is that they are only going to be open at limited capacity, whether it's twenty-five or forty percent. And there's no doubt that some restaurants at that limited capacity may not be worth it to open. There's also gonna be staffing concerns. Think about it, the person right now that is a server, that probably receives sixty percent of their income on tips, they are currently collecting not only unemployment, but they're collecting an additional six hundred dollars a week through unemployment insurance from the federal government. For them to stop collecting that money, go back into a restaurant at twenty-five percent capacity, and we don't know what the demand is gonna be. So Barrett's, for example, has a thousand person capacity, in theory, they would be allowed two hundred and fifty people inside the building. But we don't know as to whether or not two hundred and fifty people are even gonna be willing to go into a restaurant at this point. So that server who receives sixty percent or so of their income based on tips might be sitting there with nobody to serve. So staffing is going to be an issue. Surplus food is going to be an issue. If I am running one of the restaurants, how much do I, how much do I purchase in advance? I only have twenty-five percent capacity, I have to turn that food pretty quick. I don't want to stock a lot of food because waste is money. But again, am I actually going to have twenty-five percent of demand, or is it going to be less? So I feel for these business owners because they're gonna have a lot of tough decisions to make, and quite frankly, they're gonna be guessing in the dark.
So are they gonna have to maintain the six feet in between them, or how's that gonna work out?
So for the outdoor seating, the two guidelines that we are positive of at this point is, is that there will be, have to be a six foot minimum spacing between chairs of tables. So tables will have to be at least six feet apart, the chair itself will have to still be six feet apart, and there will be no more than six people allowed per table. There will be no bar service. So even if you have an outdoor bar, again, I'll use Barrett's as an example, because they're the only ones, to my knowledge, that already has an outdoor bar that is established on a patio. That bar cannot provide service. They're concerned about someone like, say, me, going up, leaning on the bar, collecting a beverage, then going to my seat, and then say Denise coming up, leaning against the same place in the bar, and it couldn't have been sanitized in the meantime. So there will be no bar service, so we know those three will be definite guidelines.
And who's gonna be the authority on this, the board of health or the board of selectmen?
It'll be the board of health, and I will tell you that, you know, in these meetings with the lieutenant governor, to her credit, she understands that she's putting a lot on the municipalities. First of all, the state could never have the resources. Second, we don't want this to become a police state. We don't want the state police and/or our local police standing at every single restaurant. So it's gonna end up being the board of health, and obviously, our board of health is a whole whopping one person for a staff member plus a secretary.
That's a big problem, yeah.
It is, we also do not know what the enforcement mechanism will be. Right now, if you do not wear your mask in settings that you're required to wear your mask, if the board of health has the authority to issue you a citation for the first time and a three hundred dollar fine on the second time. So it's fairly presumptive that we would probably have the same stair step refining system, if you will, of a restaurant, for whatever reason, did not allow six feet in between tables. But that is speculation at this point, we have not seen that guideline.
Okay, any other questions, or any other thing you want to bring up?
David, so, on here is the common VIC, but we also have the liquor issue, so we want to streamline the approval of the liquor to be outdoors as well.
Right.
Yep, correct, so that's step two. Step one was just an FYI, letting you know where we are, what our communications side, I've put all the memos into your packet so you could see, we've had ample communication. In what we're doing, we try to keep people safe and moving forward. And then step two is talking about our common VIC policy, specifically in reference to alcohol.
Okay.
Okay.
So on that one there, again, this is good news, we're going to, restaurants are gonna be able to seat outside. Granted, it's probably not going to be enough, and truthfully, I wouldn't anticipate that every single restaurant is gonna be able to take advantage of this. For example, Nico's Restaurant already doesn't have ample parking. For them to be able to place outdoor seating and have parking, they're going to be challenged by that. Hopefully, they can figure something out, and if they can't, for example, they might only be able to put five tables out and still have some parking. And it may not be worth it to open for five tables. That'll be an individual business owner's decision. But here's where I'm getting at, is that right now, we are creating an application. Is that right now we are creating an application to allow business owners who would like to take advantage of this to fill out the application, get signed off by the applicable department heads, namely the building inspector, fire chief and the board of health. And then I would sign it at that point stating that they would be able to immediately open. Lorna then will create um, temporary permits. And she will leave them on your desk. We will ask you to come in, sign those permits. And then the business owner will then pick up the permit and have the permit on site. That is vastly different than the way we normally do it now. Normally you have to take an approval, you sign the permit. It goes to the state of Massachusetts for their approval through ABCC and then they would open. So this would streamline it. My hope is, is that in creating a policy such as this is that uh, within reason, we might be able to get some of these restaurants open within 24, 48 hours. One item that has come up is safety. So for example, if we put a whole bunch of tables at, at, um, at a restaurant and it's on a parking lot, somebody driving a car could unfortunately drive right through that area. So there has been discussion as to whether or not we would require Jersey barriers, for example, or some type of barriers to protect them. I've reached out to my counterparts on this and I have received a whole hodgepodge of answers. Some people had never thought of it and once they thought of it, they were like, wow, that makes a lot of sense. And some people have said, you know, I'm gonna, we want to get them open. We're not going to require it. And as a result, um, you know, kind of whatever happens, happens. So I'm gonna, I'm right now I'm leaning towards more in the middle of saying that I think that some type of protection barrier would be a requirement. However, that we would like to get them up and running, go ahead and get up and running and we will give you, say, two weeks to be able to secure the barriers and, and put them up. I've checked with the DPW department. Uh, normally these barriers are available. Uh, however, if a whole bunch of municipalities are now looking for them, really restaurants are looking for them, the supply went down pretty quick. And they're guessing that they're about $250 or so apiece. That does not include transportation of the barrier. So there would be an additional fee for that. So it, it's unfortunate because the, I don't want these restaurants to incur additional expense. But if they do have seating directly in the middle of a parking lot, I can understand why there would be some concerns about lack of safety.
Okay. Good point.
Um, David, what about ours? So especially when it comes to liquor. So right now, if say there's a 1:00 AM liquor license, will we just carry that 1:00 AM over to this outdoor seating or do you think it would be appropriate to limit all to 11:00 PM or something like that?
Yeah. Um, so truthfully, I feel like if, I'm not so sure what the difference is between inside and outside. Um, and so I would just make those hours consistent, but that is part of what I'm looking for from direction from the board. Because I'm going to create a policy and I'm going to be asking you to approve a blanket policy. And the blanket policy would be something like this. That anybody that comes before us, that you allow us to draft a policy, they would sign the policy and then they would be up and running once they got signed off from the applicable department heads. And then you would sign the permit at that point. As part of that policy has to be some distinguishing uh, parts of that, i.e. alcohol serving. So right now, if somebody is allowed to serve from noon to 11, I would think they would still be allowed to serve from noon to 11. Um, there has to be something in the policy that will state if, for example, there's issues or problems that we can rescind it without a hearing. We, you guys would just take a vote and would automatically be rescinded at that point. Um, if there is a butters that for whatever reason felt that they were noisy because they didn't have to deal with outdoor crowds before.
That's what I think.
Then they have to either control that or if we receive complaints, you would just take a vote to either curtail hours or take it away. This is not going to be an established right. First, this temporary order from the governor expires on November 1st. So it is not an established long-term policy. And second, because we are making accommodations throughout this process, if they are unable to be able to respectfully accept those accommodations, then it's just going to be a quick vote of the board and you're going to rescind it at that point. But I I'm sorry, but I do think that you raise a question I was going to ask anyway. Is that I need some direction from the board as to what you prefer in, in reference to hours of operation. I'm sorry, Selectmen Rays.
That's okay. You said this is in effect until November 1st?
That is correct.
So I agree with what Anthony has brought up. Um, the fact that there's going to be this relaxed outdoor seating rules. Um, there are some restaurants or, or some establishments we didn't intend. They may have a license to stay open to one, but we didn't intend for all of this seating to be outside. And there are some located in sensitive areas. So I think I'd, I'd like to see something written in here to maybe limit the outdoor hours for reasonable time rather than wait until residents are affected and have to go through a filing a complaint process and have us rescind it, something there's, there's no rules around. I mean, I don't like to make rules for rules, but um, say, you know, outdoor seating till one o'clock when a business abuts neighbors and those neighbors are used to having it be an indoor facility. I'd be in favor of some sort of reduced hours.
Yep. So um, if you guys could just let me know as to what you prefer, that's exactly what we'll put into the policy.
So I think we should also move the lunch to there's some places I think that their license starts at like four o'clock or so after lunchtime. Some places aren't open for lunch. I think part of this should be allowing all of them to open at what 11:00 AM? Is that what we're allowed to do or whatever that time is to open for lunch and then maybe cap it at 11:00 PM?
Yeah, I think 11 to 11 is reasonable.
All right. That sounds good.
And as unless the board has any objection to this, um, part of my thought process is to not allow outdoor entertainment. I don't think that we want bands or, or anything uh, outdoor music. Again, if you disagree with me, then, then that's fine, but some of these people have entertainment licenses. And to Selectman Ray's point earlier, it was never expected or anticipated or envisioned that this entertainment license they hold would be transferred to outside. So I'm not so sure that that's something we'd want to do as well.
So what about the ones that currently do have outdoor entertainment licenses? I know Barrett's does. I, Hardee's might, there might be one or two others. So if they already have it, I think that
in effect.
We should continue to allow it.
So if that's the case, then do you want to remain consistent with if you already have an outdoor entertainment license, it remains in effect? And if somebody wants an outdoor entertainment license, I think at that point instead of streamlining that, because that's not going to make the difference. I think we should bring that before the board and have you take a vote on that.
I agree. I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and just to clarify, David, the, the 11:00 PM um, hour, i- if they only have a license to be open till nine now, that doesn't mean with this relaxed standard, they stay open till 11, they close at nine.
I was thinking my intent was to allow all of them who, if they have a liquor license to allow them to be open till 11. I, this might not even be something that we need to discuss because I don't know, I don't think any are only until nine. I think they're all until at least 11 anyway.
Even on the weekdays?
I don't know. David or Lorna, do you know that?
I do not know. Lorna, if you, if you know, you're more than welcome to speak. I, I don't, I don't look at the permits themselves. So I, I can't speak to it off the top of my head.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure majority of them close or stop serving alcohol as late as legally possible. I've never seen one issued just for nine or 8:00 PM.
Okay. So if that's, if that's the case, Anthony, then I don't have a problem with it. I was just looking for if there were any established with reduced hours during the week, for whatever reason, this doesn't mean now it's 11. I, I don't know if there are any that are in sensitive areas, but if there aren't, then it's a moot point.
Yep. So
maybe I can look into David, just to be sure.
I'm sure. Um, although I'm looking for a vote tonight because this starts potentially on Monday. And, and I want, when businesses come to us on Monday or Tuesday with the guidelines, I want to be able to get them up and running and not have to wait a whole another week for a meeting or have to call a special meeting, which requires 48 hours posting notice.
Yeah.
So um, so I'm, I think what I'm capturing is that if they are allowed to be open after 11:00 AM, that you're willing to allow them to open as early as 11. And if they are closed at 11:00 PM or later, is to curtail it to 11. But if their look, current license closes them prior to 11, then to keep it consistent with that earlier time.
Yeah, or, or I guess
That's fine. I think either way it's probably going to be 11.
So you need a more?
Yeah.
You need a more?
I think this simply said, the, the way it should be worded is that the these rules apply to businesses with a license past 11 o'clock. And any business with a license prior to 11 o'clock stays as is.
Yep.
Pretty much one sentence.
Yep.
So that would be my only request.
Yep.
Other than that, I would, I would make a motion to approve this.
Is there a second?
Second?
Marari, yes.
Raise, yes.
Kenninghan, yes.
Okay. So
Thank you. Um, and the last on the agenda is in reference to the Senate has a, I've been in contact with Senator Timmeltie. And he is, they are bringing to the floor next week a vote on a Senate IT bond bill. I have placed in your packet, I asked our IT director to discuss with department heads in town in what he believes are our top priorities in town. So with that said, um, you'll see that there's a handful of items in front of you that he believes that would be priorities. Um, cybersecurity training, the police is looking for a new email archiver. The fire department's looking for two tablets. We'd be looking for Chromebooks throughout the town and the school. And uh, in speaking to Selectman Ray's the other day, I thought you made a good point. Is that our current Comcast bill to provide internet service is about $37,000, $38,000. So we can add to the list if you would like, but at this point, that's $131,000. And I figured that I could put that on and we'll see as to how much money that we may be able to access if any.
Very good. Sounds good.
Could we also add some funding, uh, maybe add a line in there to receive some funding for laptops for the COA? And as well as some funding for um, helping offset the costs of Xfinity services for either low income or seniors?
Yep. So um, the, the Chromebooks for $46,000 includes the Council on Aging.
Okay.
Um, so that we got covered. However, uh, so you're talking about, so um, I think what you, you're saying is let's assume that we receive funds. How would, I want to make sure I count, how would that work? How, what are you thinking?
So I'm thinking a fund that residents could utilize to help offset their costs if they're in a low income or in a senior status. Um, I mean, I don't know off the top of my head how you would administer something like that. I certainly don't want to make it paperwork intensive, but there's a lot of money that can be allocated in this bill. And when I looked at it a week or so ago, um, it seemed to me there was a lot of opportunity. Well, getting something on this computer. Um, so that, that was my thought. Um, if you can, you know, maybe look at how other, well, how other funds are distributed. I think sorry, the other thing, the other thing I was thinking, David, is we've talked quite a bit and it's gotten nowhere. That would mean with you, I mean, at our meetings and I've talked about it is more um, more electronic means in town hall. Instead of copying papers and storing paper, we look at um, micro uh, scanning and indexing so that the paperwork is accessible at all times, 24/7. Meaning it's stored in the computer or on the cloud. Uh, this is an opportunity to maybe get that moving or at least get some funding. So if we could maybe put in for $150,000, $200,000 towards that.
So um, I think there's two, so first things first is that how much money would you like me to request? In order to, I think you're saying create a fund. So if somebody would qualify, we'd have to come up with obviously parameters. But if somebody qualified, then it sounds like we would be cutting them a check or paying their bill. Uh, so how much money would you want me to, you know, what's the request?
I'd say I think uh, $30,000 is probably a good number.
Okay.
And we have the fund and I don't know how that's administered for the um, low income loans for the Septic Betterment System. Is that purely handled by the Board of Health?
Yes.
Okay. So it sounds like this could become administrative in our office. I wouldn't want to put too much more paperwork on it, but I think if anything was proven, well, one of the things that was proven through COVID-19 is that people need access to internet. They need to know how to use it. Um, and they need help with the bill that comes along with it. Um, so you know, if there's an opportunity for that, like I said, the second part is I'd like to see, I mean, this is an opportunity, what I've heard in the past is it's a lot of money to get us onto an electronic storage system. And this is an opportunity to get some funding for it. So maybe, I don't know, $150,000, $200,000?
Big. Will do.
So anything else?
Nope. I would just ask you to take a vote that I will place all of this into a memo and forward over to Senator Timmeltie.
Okay. Is there a motion? Is it a second?
Second.
Marari, yes.
Kenninghan, yes.
Raise, yes.
Okay, so loaded.
Thank you. And so that was the last item on the agenda. One last item I did want to mention, it was not on the agenda because it couldn't have been, we couldn't have known. Is that there were some riots in Brockton last night. Um, our police department was part of the response team to the riots. And I just want to say that our police department performed exemplary up there as they do every single day. Uh, we had two officers that were in Brockton and earlier in the day were in Wareham because there was a demonstration in Wareham as well. And that as these demonstrations continue in the future, I would suspect that our police department will be continuously called upon to respond. And um, as you saw, you know, at some level it got violent last night. They, they put their lives on the line. Uh, and, and um, so I just want to say that they're just doing a really good job. And since you are the ultimate author, appointing authority in the town that appoints your police department, that there's just a, it's a police department to be proud of. And I just want to give you an FYI that we were in Brockton and Wareham yesterday.
I'd just like to talk about the fire department. They're in Brock and they went directly to the fire on Nelson Street. It was quite a fire. And uh, we, we sent a truck out there and they were, uh, they were involved uh, with the pump there and, and that fire. Uh, also that, that was going on at the same time as they had the uh, the demonstrators out there. So uh, uh, yeah, they, this mutual aid uh, uh, works out pretty good.
So I was just
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I don't want to get on a soapbox about this whole thing because I believe there's a there's a small percentage of incompetence in every industry and profession. So but I also believe that a very significant percentage of our police officers are very good police officers and very good people. And I believe our own department is exemplary. Um, and my heart goes out not only to the people that were affected by this tragedy that happened that shouldn't have happened. It's awful. But at the same time to the police and first responders that are out there who've done nothing wrong or taking a lot of abuse and being put in harm's way. That you pray for them all the time and am grateful for what they're doing.
Yep.
Is there more? Is there a motion? Motion, Adrian?
So moved.
Second.
House on favor? Thank you.
Raise, yes.
Kenan, yes.
And Marari, yes.